Chad, do you want to give us like a test of your mic or anything?
Test, 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 test. Good?
And making some. That's right.
On this. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the pre-meeting for the Ogden Valley Planning Commission, June 29, 2021. Let's go ahead and start with the first petition, the point discussion. Steve, you'll be presenting that. Do you want to give us a quick summary of that?
Sure. And just so you know, Marta is hosting remotely. I'm kind of over here working the controls and everything else, but yeah, let me show you the point. I've just got to pack it up and then I'm going to show on the screen and kind of walk you through that. But basically, I think it was in May, there was a rezone that allowed what's called the point, which is one of the final phases of the Worldmark condominium PRUD. It's three units. The intent of this conditional use permit amendment is to, you can actually see it right here. Here's the original lot line. You can follow where my mouse is. It's to bump it out a little bit to give it more room. So an important thing to note on this is there is no new density being proposed. It's just simply adding more area for these buildings to be able to meet the setbacks a little bit better. That's pretty much what it is. Parking is not an issue. We've looked at parking as of yesterday. I've been speaking with Mr. Householder. There was an issue that did come up. You'll notice the proposed area over here where my mouse is. That hasn't been finalized as far as ownership goes. Easement, to have an easement for parking yet, but without these spots, there's still enough parking to meet the ordinance. It's 84 parking spots is the requirement. So that's about how many were originally proposed.
Okay, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant or Steve?
Well, yes, so that was originally part of the golf course. But if you remember during the rezone, there was some O1, sorry, some FR3 that was rezoned to O1 to make up for that change. And maybe just as a clarification question for the owner, is it Wolf Creek Properties of this? The point? Okay, okay.
Maybe Eric, maybe you come up to the podium so the audience can hear you. Please state your name and where you're from.
Eric Householder, Eden Utah. Essentially what we did is we came, grabbed about half an acre from the golf course and pulled it into the project. And the reason we had to change the layout was to meet current fire code. There were some issues getting with the old alignment, getting to the back corner of the building, and it gave us some ability flow through the parking lot as well. So that's why we have the change.
And Eric, the change, that's specific to the RV boat and RV units?
Well, essentially, yeah, right in this section here, we were working with our neighbors, the Timeshare folks, and we had an agreement verbally. But at the very end of the day, we couldn't get it signed off from the top. So that section has gone away. And like Steve said, we still meet the code in terms of meeting the required parking. I mean, hopefully down the road it comes along and it'd be nice, but we don't have control of that today. That's correct, yes. On the north side of the project. I just can't control the visual here.
And just this was something we found out about, I guess, yesterday on the staff end of things. So it wasn't anything we could have really updated our packets with in time. So it's just kind of.
Packets are already going out. Any other further questions or? Well, it kind of varies. So in the very tightest side, which would be just off there a little bit across from that parking lot, it's 24 feet. But in most other cases, it's wider. Yeah, we do have some parallel parking along there. Yeah. Sure. Yeah, if there's a need to label that we can, you know, there's an opportunity to maybe down the road where that gets widened out. We're trying to avoid some existing infrastructure right there. Sure, absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll come back with more questions on that, just so we get to everything before the pre-meeting is over. The second issue we're going to talk about is the design request for design review permit for two four-week rock crushing. So rock crushing of Eden Escapes. I'm assuming Tammy's not going to be presenting. It's going to be you, Steve. Is that right?
That's right. Yeah, so we've got a request. There's a development called Eden Escapes. If you can see my screen here, this is where the development is taking place. There's a request to have a temporary rock crusher to create the material for the road rather than having, you know, rock trucks bringing that from various places. So what the request is, it's a design review. Typically, that's how we've done these. We've said it's an accessory to the development of a subdivision. And so we've required a designer view so we can place conditions if necessary. This is a request to have this operated for four weeks. And I apologize, I'm going through this four weeks. If you look at the staff recommendation, the hours of operation are to be, at least it's recommended, to have them be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Saturday, which I believe was the original request of the developer. Any questions on that one?
So it's a four-week max?
They had that before and it was. Well, some neighbors didn't like the dust, but you know, this is the next development over. They were told about this expansion when they moved in.
Yeah, this is a four-week max request, and they also do have some spray, some water sprayers to control dust. We have seen other requests that have gone, I think, maybe a little bit longer than four weeks, but they're just only asking for four weeks from the date that it's approved.
I can see it from my outside.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, that's up to the commission, yeah, to you as a planning commission to set those hours.
Good suggestion. Anything else glaring on that one? Okay, third is going to be a request for preliminary and final legacy estates. So there's two projects on this agenda that I'm involved with that I'll be recusing myself with. This is one of them. And again, Tammy's not here, so it sounds like you'll be presenting and maybe the applicant can come forward also. What's good? Give us a rundown, Steve, of what's going on.
Let me give you that rundown. You're right. I will be presenting for Tammy today. This is a 48-lot PRUD subdivision. Previously, there was a conditional use permit that was granted for this lot layout and for this number of lots. And so this subdivision plating process is one of those steps to have these units entitled. This request today, it's actually for preliminary approval and for final approval together. If a developer meets the requirements under the land use code to do that, then we, it can be allowed. So that's why we're bringing it before you today as the planning commission, the request for preliminary and final approval. The big things to look at on like a final approval are where we're at on the water. The applicant has provided what we call a capacity assessment letter from the water and sewer district. So we as staff feel like this meets the subdivision ordinances for preliminary and final. Notices were sent out for this preliminary consideration. So there's a good chance that there will be members of the public here. And it's not. So we'll serve as just initially, yeah, we can service you if you provide, you know, X, Y, and Z. This is, I guess, the second step, which is, yeah, we've looked into our resources. We have the capacity to serve this development.
Or maybe the applicant can come up and give us kind of a rundown of the high points.
Again, Eric Householder. I think Steve pretty much hit everything. One thing that's kind of unique here is that we have the 48 lots, but the entitlements actually are 73 when you look at the overall project and what can actually be laid out and used. So there are some leftover entitlements that down the road we'd like to use for the TDR ordinance when that comes into play. We'll possibly use up to eight of them here on the project. It's kind of, I guess, the uniqueness of this. This has been in front of you before, and I guess if you have any direct questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the fourth one we're going to talk about tonight is consideration and action on the request for preliminary approval for Charlie's Acres subdivision, which is four residential lots. Felix, I understand you're presenting that.
Yes, so four-lot subdivision, and it's in a little area, about 38 acres parcel that they're splitting up into four lots. For just four residential lots, and the zoning there is agricultural valleys with a three-acre minimum. So that's that's kind of the rundown of the basics of that. We won't go into further detail with some visual aids and work through some of the conditions that staff has placed on this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
One of them, I mean, the other low ones and then.
The, I believe the largest one is the desired lot for the owner. So the intention is for him to hold on to that one and yeah. 25, that's right. Yeah, it's definitely a big size, but I mean, definitely entitled to go as large as they want. But again, the minimum is that three acres. That's right, that's right. Can't get enough line. Maybe some, I, yeah, I guess the intention, maybe some horses and, you know, some agricultural type uses is the goal on that piece. Yes, they're showing the well protection zones just to satisfy health department requirements. The health department likes to see those well protection zones in place. Just to give, they may not have the wells drilled yet, but the health department wants to see those on the plat, just to give them an idea of how they're going to work. The wells, the protection zones with the septic systems and drain fields and also things like that, just to make sure there's enough space and lots are configured to. Yeah, we'll probably, I'll probably have to just review the report real quickly to get more detail, but we are going to have the developer in the meeting as well. So hopefully that that question answered for you sufficiently. Yes, each one will have their private well. Yeah.
I hope they make that clear. Somebody buys a put a hole down there.
Yeah, the owner has secured the well permits. I'm pretty close. I mean, maybe a couple blocks. They're not terribly far away from that connection. Yeah, that's a new requirement that was recently amended. And so these guys actually came in before that. So they'd be invested in the the previous version. Yeah, they barely scored in in time.
Okay. All right, thanks. Appreciate it, Felix. Approving some minutes from. Actually, I assumed this was fifty-seven. You're welcome to squawk. To keep it alive, I would be happy.
Good question. Yep. That's right. Well, yeah, Weaver Basin would, would, for, for each well is, is one acre feet. That, that's including, that's basically point, point five acre, uh, point four-five acre feet for the home, for the culinary, and then point five-five for irrigation. So, yeah, for four lots, yep. Yeah. That's right. Yeah.
Okay. Get started, y'all ready?
I was gonna, uh, I think the packets that we just printed out, I think they're sort of like half of a packet for some reason, so we're printing full packets.
Okay. We have some iPads working up here in the meantime. Uh, okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission for June twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one. Um, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, uh, in present today is Commissioner Francis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lackey, Commissioner Torman, Commissioner Schuman, Commissioner Burton, and myself, Commissioner Lewis. Um, let's see, let's go ahead and have a vote on the, uh, approval of minutes for April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Probably abstained, unless you have... Yeah, so just don't vote.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for, what was the date again?
Twenty-seven, April twenty-seven.
April twenty-seven.
Okay, do I have a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? The abstained? Okay, so Burton and Torman abstained.
And if, if you could, and, uh, I apologize, but if you could just speak like, like this into the mic, just, I think we've got, since we've got some newer commissioners, we want to make sure we get the minutes accurate and everything like that, so, thank you.
That gives us at least four votes, though, so I think it still passes. Okay, so that passes. Um, so we're going to go over, uh, four different, uh, items on the agenda. Uh, usually I ask for, does anybody have a conflict of interest? I do on two of these, so I will be excusing myself, uh, for two of these. Um, Chair Francis, yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to hand it over to you for those portions.
That was two-point-three and...
Um, yeah, two-point-one. I'm selling it. I'm not actually the petitioner, but I'm selling it. And then two-point-three is, is, I'm a partner on that, so I'll just stay out of those. Um, uh, does anybody else have a conflict of interest? Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with the first one, and I will recuse myself. Just call me when you're done.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Chair.
Okay, two-point-one is a conditional use permit request, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-nine, consideration and action on a conditional use permit amendment for the point at Wolf Creek Condominiums PRUD located approximately thirty-eight, thirty-five North Wolf Creek Drive. And, um, Steve Burton is presenting that this evening?
Yes. Hi, Commissioners. Um, I'm just responding to the person printing a couple packets right now. So I apologize. Okay. Yeah, so I've got, um, a few things here to, to show you. This is a conditional use permit amendment. Um, so back in the nineties, there was a development called Worldmark Condominiums, and this is, uh, one of the final phases. On my screen here, I'm going to kind of circle with my mouse. You can see some of these units that have already been plotted. Um, what's proposed now is to have, uh, the remaining three units to be plotted. There's actually a fourth one to be plotted down here, but, so three of the remaining units will be plotted. Um, back in the nineties, there was a conditional use permit for this layout for all of these units. Um, over the last few months, the owner has been working on a, a rezone, to rezone this specific little sliver up here, so that the buildings could be pushed out a little bit and give it a little bit more room. They've, they've just had a, figured that this sightline would be better than what was previously plotted, and I'll show you what, again, I'll just kind of toggle. But this is what was previously plotted in this area. This is what's currently proposed. No new density, still the same amount of units, which ends up being forty-eight units. Um, the reason that this is before you is because anytime a PRUD is amended, technically, we, we consider this to be a non-conforming PRUD. If you remembered, uh, two or three months ago, the county changed the, and I apologize, when I say PRUD, I'm referring to a planned residential unit development. It's a subdivision type. A few months ago, the county changed the process to get a PRUD. Previously, you had to get a conditional use permit, and now it is a legislative item. It's like, almost like a rezone. Um, but since this is a non-conforming PRUD, meaning they previously were approved under an older ordinance, um, they do have the option to come to you and request that this, that you consider this to be a small enough change, that it does not warrant any kind of legislative rezone. So that's what's before you as a request, um, that, that the owner considers to be a, is a de minimis change, um, to expand the building area. And that's essentially all this is. We've looked at the parking, and there's still the same amount of parking that was previously provided under the old, um, site plan. Um, so let me give you the staff recommendation real quick here. And I should say, I wanted to point out as well, these buildings, um, I'm going to share screen again. Part of, uh, when you're looking at a conditional use permit, um, you can look at the way, the, the way the architecture and the, you know, the materials look. Um, you can see, this is an, an image of the existing buildings, and this is proposed to be the, the future building. So, uh, very similar, um, in architecture and in like roof pitches. Um, difference in material, you'll notice this is, um, like vinyl siding. What's being proposed is more like Harvey board siding, but similar colors. Uh, we feel that that also is not anything that, um, would warrant a, you know, a legislative change. So with that being said, um, the staff is recommending that, uh, the, this proposed change be approved, and that it be considered a de minimis revision to the previous PRUD site plan. And, uh, the recommendation is based on the, the finding that's listed in the staff report, which is that the proposed changes are considered routine and uncontested. Um, the owner's also here. If you have questions for them, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Steve, you said they are applying for a rezone, or they would have to if we don't consider this a de minimis change, is that...?
Yeah. If the planning commission does not consider this a de minimis change, um, the owner would, would have to go through what we call a master plan overlay zone, and yeah, they would have to do some kind of a rezone.
Does the, does the capturing of the golf course property, I mean, it, it, it's pretty significant if you look at it. It's, it's about half the size of the building that's being captured. Yeah, right here. I mean, that, the existing property line is going right through the middle of those buildings. Does that take away from the common space required on the golf course for the density? Is the golf course being used for the density of any housing units in the area as far as acres per lot?
Good question. So this, um, this specific section, this sliver, was, um, a few weeks ago, was actually just rezoned for this purpose. So previously, it was O-one zoning, uh, which said, no, you can't have any development in O-one. Um, in order to do this, they had to rezone this sliver to the, the existing zone, which is FR-three, um, to make that happen. And, uh, to answer your question, Commissioner, I would say that this, um, this, you, were you asking if, if, could you repeat your question?
So, so the requirements in, in the Ogden Valley are three acre, three acres per lot, essentially, right? And you can cluster develop if you have properties that are, that, that compile that three acres per lot somewhere else, right? Is that, is that correct, or am I wrong in saying that?
This zone is not three acres per lot, no. This specific zone is FR-three.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for the clarification on that.
Let me ask, are you asking, though, if this golf course property, was it part of an open space that allowed density, higher density in another place in the area?
I apologize, I, I'm still not fully understanding the question.
So historically, many years ago, a lot of the open space in the Wolf Creek area was used to allow higher density in some of the development around there. And so I think he's asking...
That, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to hear.
That property fulfilled, um, requirements that allowed higher density in areas surrounding, surrounding area.
Yeah. So the way that this, um, the, really, the Wolf Creek area works is under the master plan. Um, there is a page, there's an exhibit of the master plan that shows how much open space is required. Uh, Wolf Creek still has, they, they provided, technically, they have more open space. Um, they, they have, um, I don't know the exact acreage amount, but this, this area does not take away from any required open space, which I think is the heart of the question.
That, that is the question. Thank you.
Also, when this rezone was done, they transferred FR-three area and converted that to O-one, and then moved the FR-three area over to this spot. So they transferred like for like as part of the rezone.
Understood. Thank you.
Question. Any other questions?
Did, did the, has the fire department looked at this preliminary or this plan to make sure they have the, the, uh, they can get fire trucks in and out of there?
They have, they have granted, uh, approval of this project.
Okay.
Are we ready to, um, have a motion? Okay?
And if, if, Commissioner, if you could, uh, in your motion, if you could just speak into the mic.
Okay, that's right here. Can you hear me?
Marta, can you hear everyone? Okay?
I don't know if it's working. Is this working?
Yeah, that's good.
Yes, I can hear. I think just...
She can hear us.
Speak quite close to it.
All right. I, I move to recommend approval for petition, um, uh, CUP-two-zero-two-one-zero-nine for a request for a conditional use permit amendment to the, to, uh, the Worldmark PRUD located at thirty-eight, thirty-five North Wolf Creek Drive, Eden, FR-three zone residential. Subject all, all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report, and to all state and county agencies' requirements, and that the streets be posted, no parking, to allow emergency vehicles to their affair. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report. Applicant is Point at Wolf Creek LLC, Representative Eric Householder.
Is there a second on that motion?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays?
Did you hear, uh, Commissioner Lackey said aye?
And I was just, I wanted to ask, is somebody monitoring him if he raises his hand?
Um, Marta, the host, is, yes.
Okay, great. All right, motion carries.
I think as a commissioner, he can just chime in anytime. I don't know that Mr. Lackey, or Commissioner Lackey needs to raise his hand.
I just wondered if I don't hear him or see him.
Chair, Chair Francis, this is Commissioner Lackey. I was having, uh, audio problems earlier, but now I'm, now I'm all set.
Great, great to have you back.
Thanks.
All right. We'll move on to, I'll turn the time back over to Chair Lewis for discussion on two-point-two.
Great, thank you, Chair Francis. Lots of chairs around. Good. Um, okay, so next we'll be talking about two-point-two, DR-two-zero-two-one-zero-nine, uh, consideration and action on a request for design review approval of a permit, a temporary two-to-four weeks rock-crushing operation for improvements with the Eden Escape plat A and B subdivisions. Um, and that will be not Tammy presenting, and I'll be Steve.
Yes. Commissioners, um, what we've got today is a, just, just as was stated, a request to have a temporary rock-crushing operation, uh, to be able to, to create the material for the road in this Eden Escape subdivision. Uh, historically, when we've got an application for a rock crusher, um, there isn't necessarily anything in the sub, in, in the zoning that says rock crusher permitted, not permitted. Um, but we've historically considered these to be accessory to, uh, building a subdivision. Um, and also, um, if, if any harmful impact can be mitigated, um, it's nice to, that, that, that we don't have rock trucks driving around, uh, the Ogden Valley, potentially causing issues with roads and things like that. So that's why we've done this. Historically, there, there've been a few that have come previously in the previous years. Uh, this one is really no different. This is a, uh, request to have a rock crusher, uh, operate for four weeks from the date the planning commission, um, grants approval of that. If the planning commission does grant approval of it, this is to kind of give you a, just a general idea of the location that that will be located. Um, the, since I've introduced it, I don't know if you, if you'd rather hear maybe from the owner, um, to describe a few things that are going on, or if you'd like me to just give the staff recommendation first.
Why don't you go ahead and give the recommendation, and then we'll have Commissioners ask questions.
So I just wanted to go over a few things with you. Um, the proposed hours of operation are to be from eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. There, there is plan to have a, a water truck present to be able to control any dust issues. There is planned to have a water truck present to be able to control any dust issues. We're anticipating that this, the crushing site, it will change, but we don't anticipate that it's farther than three hundred feet away from any residents at any time, which we feel is a pretty good distance. We don't know that there would really be that much of a noise concern. So as staff, we're recommending that the planning commission approve this, subject to any review agency requirements and the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I can go over those really quick, there's four. One, crushing will only be allowed, sorry, will be allowed only for onsite material to be used for improvements within Eden Escape Plat A and B subdivisions. No offsite material may be brought in for crushing, and no onsite material may be crushed and then exported to other locations. The site plan, sorry, two, the site plan mitigation controls must be followed as well as other conditions stated within the staff report. Three, the hours of operation shall be from eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. Four, the operation will end four weeks from the date approval is given by the planning commission. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
I do have one quick question that's just came to mind. Traditionally, there's been a lot of springs and other wet areas up in this area. And I'm just wondering if there are, I'm looking at the topo map there of the aerial. It looks like there may be some, they'll be doing the crushing in the red lined area, is that correct?
So that's the path that the crusher will follow, yeah, that's where the crushing will take place.
So.
That's a pretty high dry road from what I've, yeah, you can see the green down the fifteenth freeway. The road itself is just, is just rock.
All right, so my only, I was just wondering if there were any nearby areas that would need to be protected, so that was my question.
As we've reviewed this, we haven't identified that there are any streams to be protected.
Or wetlands or.
Correct.
They'll still have to comply with the SWIP regulations for this as well, right?
That's correct.
Can you speak more to the dust prevention plan?
Sure. Let me pull up the staff report here. I just, I apologize, this wasn't initially a project that I had been reviewing. There's another one of our planners that's out of town, but would it be okay, Commissioner, if maybe the applicant spoke to that a little bit?
Sure.
Mr. Everson, if you're there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Rick Everson, the applicant. So, yeah, the crusher will, sorry, something just changed in my audio, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. The crusher has sprayers within it. So as the material, as the material is loaded into it and hits the jaws, if dust comes out of it or is a problem, then they turn the sprayers on. So it basically knocks it down right there within the opening of the machine. And I didn't, I don't know if this is the right time to mention it, but Steve, on one of, on the number four of your recommendation, the four week period from the date of approval, I was, I don't know that we'll be starting, well, I know we won't be starting like tomorrow. The subcontractor that will perform the work on our behalf, he's, I think it's July seventeenth or something. So maybe in the final recommendation, if we could just have a maximum of four weeks from the time we start the operations, that would be more beneficial. Or we could set the date if you'd like, I hope his schedule doesn't change. But I believe it was the seventeenth of July that he would begin. And, and just so you know, I, he was confident that it would take less than four weeks for the amount of material we have there. But I just wanted to give a little bit of a buffer there in case the machine broke down or had maintenance issues or something like that.
Another question, how much of a hardship would it be if we asked on Saturdays, if you delayed beginning an hour later at nine and stopping by five? I'm thinking that would be two hours times four, which would be about eight hours of work. I don't know if you'd need one more day on top of that two weeks, but would that be a possibility?
Yeah, I think that's a fair request. The subcontractor has stated he plans on working forty to fifty hours per week. And so the hours, eight to six, Monday through Saturday, that's like sixty hours. So shaving an hour off each end on Saturday shouldn't be a problem at all.
Thank you.
Follow up on the question, where's the plan to get the water? Highly intensive, as we all know, with water shortage right now in the short timeline.
Right. I can't, it's not that much water that it uses. The plan was to get a temporary meter from Wolf Creek Water and Sewer District. That's who serves the subdivision and pay their construction water rates. And the amount of water off the top of my head has escaped me, but I want to say it was like two thousand gallons a day or something, which is really like no more than a home would use. But that's the plan, is to, is to get metered water from the sewer and water district.
So this is Commissioner Lackey. And an average house in the valley uses about eight thousand gallons a month. And at two thousand gallons a day times thirty times a month, that's sixty thousand gallons.
All right, so you know, maybe, it might have been, maybe I was thinking two hundred a day. I just remember the math worked out to be like less than what a resident would use. The number I can't recall off the top of my head, but it was surprisingly low.
But either way, you have to pay for it and or truck it in with a truck, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
You know, I, Commissioner Lewis, I know with, right now, they are on rationing, is that correct? Every other day watering or whatever. So I'm just wondering if it might be a good idea just to touch bases with Wolf Creek and give them a heads up and see if there is an issue.
They might have to truck from Ogden or somewhere else.
Yeah, but I don't know if it would put any extra burden on Wolf Creek's system.
Well, they won't, they won't let it.
If they even have a heads up.
Yeah, they may want to check for sure.
Especially with the rationing that's every other day, and they're doing it every day.
Yeah, we'll confirm with them. And one of our onsite superintendent was supposed to already have connected with them. I'm not sure if he has, but if they can't supply the amount of water needed, like Commissioner Lewis mentioned, but we'll just have to bring it in from another source.
Without water, they can't do it, that's their problem to get the water.
Yep.
Part of the SWIP permit and stuff like that, the stormwater protection plan, they have to have dust mitigation in that. The county wouldn't allow them to, from my understanding, the county wouldn't give them the permit to do dust control.
If the approval, if we approve it today with the condition he said in here, he's going to spray water on the belt and whatever he needs to do.
They do that a lot and stuff like that. He said it's built in the machine.
So that's part of the, that's part of the permit, if you can't get water.
Yeah, I think the sound was the big complaint last time versus dust. I think they did a pretty good job on dust mitigation last time, but it was loud, I know that.
No, to the point, though, of dust, I know because of the heat wave we've been having and the drought situation, I know the state has been issuing a lot more red flag days. And so how did they work with that on red flag days when there's already?
Yeah, I don't, they can't produce dust, they have to put out the dust before it even gets going. You know, I would think if it conflicts with the red flag day, then the dust mitigation is not working.
So it looks like there's a balancing thing here. We don't like noise, but we don't like forty trucks for every residence coming in and out. So it seems like this is a good way to mitigate all those trucks on the highway and all that noise.
Staff, do you guys feel like you could find out and shut them down fast enough if the dust was an issue?
We would, we typically get complaints about that, there's people watching pretty closely up there.
Questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I made the motion. I move that we approve this as a, two point two, it's DR two oh two one zero nine, consideration and action on a request for a design review approval to permit a temporary rock crushing operation for improvements Eden Escape Plat A and B subdivisions. Based on the findings and staff recommendation, that be approved. And I move that it be approved for a period of four weeks from next Monday, next Tuesday, Monday is the holiday. The applicant has mentioned they probably can't start tomorrow. So we'll assume that he can start Tuesday, and it'll go forward four weeks from next Tuesday, the sixth of July. Okay, do I have a second? Okay, discussion?
I was wondering if you would be amenable to amending your motion that on Saturdays, hours of operation would be limited between nine AM and five PM. Have, if they work, have a long day, maybe sleep in, or they have company on the weekends, do their barbecue. Amenable to that?
Yeah, I'm amenable to that. Corlin, would that be a friendly amendment? I believe so, you could consider it that if the maker of the motion agrees to it. Okay. I have an additional question, so is there anything to, is there any reason to think the applicant can't live within the four weeks if it starts Tuesday or whenever your specific date was?
I believe he mentioned that they were planning on forty hours a week, and they're actually have wiggle room for six.
You know, is the equipment ready and available by Tuesday? Or are they going to have to wait three weeks to start? Like, is he requesting a period of time or just give me four weeks when we can get this thing going?
So I believe he said July seventeenth is when he's planning to start.
Okay, so that might be a friendly amendment as well.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to my motion. The four weeks begin on July seventeenth. And on Saturdays, the hours be limited from nine until five.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated?
Aye.
Yeah, we seconded it, well, actually, hang on. Okay, so it's been restated, so now we vote on it, we don't need a second. So on a friendly amendment, and if the, if nobody objects, then you can just declare the motion amended. And since it's already been seconded, if everybody's, you know, in agreement with the friendly amendment, then you can just call the vote on the original amendment as amended. Anybody against the friendly amendment? Okay, so I'll go ahead and have a vote on the amendment as restated. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I like the nine to five, I think that's going to go over well with the public and a good PR move on their part. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and turn the, the back over to Chair Francis, excuse myself.
All right, this is petition U V L zero five two 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 zero twenty one, request for preliminary and final approval for Legacy Estates PRUD subdivision consisting of forty eight lots and three open space parcels located at approximately sixty sixty eight East, Nighthawk Lane, Huntsville, Utah, in the F B three zone. And Steve Burton again is our presenter this evening.
Yes, sorry you have to deal with me three times in a row, let's have fun. I'll be done after this. So this is a request for preliminary and final approval of the subdivision application. The development's called Legacy Mountain Estates. Let me share my screen here. And I'll toggle back and forth so that you can actually really get a better idea for any commissioners that aren't aware of the location of this. It's right off of Old Snow Basin Road. You've got a few developments to the east and some to the south. The applicant is Legacy Mountain Estates LLC. What we're looking at is forty eight lot planned residential unit development. To give you a little bit of background, the Weber County Commission approved the site plan and the conditional use permit request on June eighth, twenty twenty one, so just a few weeks ago. When we're looking at, I'm going to go back to the the subdivision layout here so you can see where the lots are. We're talking about private roads in this development. There are forty eight lots, as you can see, some ranging in size from, I think the smallest is two acres to the biggest lot, which is around fifteen acres. And there's also some common area that will have some public access trails through it. When we look at subdivision applications and approvals such as this, we want to make sure that there is going to be adequate water and sewer as well as any secondary irrigation water. The developer has provided what we refer to as a will serve letter as well as a capacity assessment letter from Lakeview Water and Mountain Sewer. In fact, I'm happy to just kind of show you the exhibit. But from the district that references the ability to connect, so they're planning on forty eight connections, there are some impact fees that will need to be paid. For the water, the sorry, some of these are lengthy, but basically, when these letters come in, we're looking for a statement like this. Lakeview Water Company has adequate connections available to serve forty eight lots, which can allow Legacy Mountain to move forward with their development prior to development of an additional source of water. So what would happen today is if the, if the planning commission does choose to grant a preliminary and a final approval, the developer would have to work with the water and sewer district to, actually, they would, they would sign the subdivision. actually, they would, they would sign the subdivision plat, specifically the water district would have to sign the subdivision plat or give some kind of unconditional letter. The reason for that is we wanna make sure that, you know, none, none of these people that, we don't wanna make, let me back up, we wanna make sure that anybody who buys a lot in the subdivision doesn't have to, um, satisfy any of these conditions that the developer should be satisfying. So basically, we're going to ask for a, an approval letter that has no conditions on it before this goes to the county commissioners for their final signature on the plat. Uh, as we've reviewed this, we found that it does meet up, meet the subdivision requirements, both preliminary and final. Um, and we as staff are recommending, um, that the planning commission, uh, grant both of those requests. I'll give you the official, um, staff recommendation here. Staff recommends preliminary and final approval of Legacy Mountain Estates P R U D subdivision consisting of forty-eight lots and three open space parcels. This recommendation for approval is subject to all review agency requirements and is based on, based on the following conditions. And there are seven. One, all improvements shall be either installed or escrowed for prior to going before the county commission for final approval. Two, final approval from Lakeview Water and approve, sorry, approval of improvement plans related to water infrastructure shall be submitted prior to going before the county commission for final approval. Three, inclusion into Mountains, Mountain Sewer Corporation sewer shall be completed and their approval of sewer infrastructure shall be submitted prior to going before the county commission for final approval. Four, all landscaping and signage shall comply with the conditional use approval. Five, all signage must be compliant with Ogden Valley Signs chaptering the Land Use Code and shall be located such that no obstruction of site visibility shall occur. A site plan showing location of all signs shall be submitted prior to scheduling county commission approval. Six, all exterior lighting must comply with the outdoor lighting chapter. Seven, a covenant shall be recorded with the final plat reflecting Lakeview Water's limits on irrigated area for each lot, five thousand square feet maximum. We just require that so if a buyer of one of these lots wants to have a lawn, that they know that that's how much, uh, water they can have for their lawn.
So that's coming from a culinary source? Lakeview Water is a culinary?
Lakeview Water is a culinary source, yeah.
Lowing up to five thousand square feet of culinary usage for that?
Um, and I, I, that is my understanding that they will. I don't know that they actually have a secondary line. And, uh, the, the owner's also here, uh, if you had, if you have more specific question.
Uh, Steve? On this app, it says here, secondary water is not applicable. How come?
What, sorry, what was the question?
The secondary water provider says it, they have secondary, what it's, what it appears to be not applicable. They don't have to have it. Do they have to have secondary water?
They do. They have to have, they either have to have an approval from the culinary district to use their water or they have to have a secondary.
And I'm sorry, without reading the, the letter from the water district, does it specifically say that it will, um, provide culinary and secondary water?
Uh, I can, I, I think we might actually have to read it, but I, but that's okay, so. Okay. And providing irrigation to twenty-six point two one four acres of landscaping. So they will provide that service.
I had, did have one question. Maybe we can take questions first and then if any other commissioners have questions and then we'll have petitioner come up and try to address those. I was wondering about the pond, what the purpose of that was for. So after the questions have been asked, we could address what the pond was, its purpose.
Vice Chair Francis, this is Cortland.
Yes.
I wanted to, if it's okay, ask Steve about condition number three, if I may. Uh, Steve, it says inclusion into Mountain Sewer Corporation sewer or another district shall be completed. Now, there may not be a district in the end providing oversight and ownership of the wastewater treatment there. And so would it be appropriate to amend that to just say something along the lines of there will be, um, evidence what, through, through a letter, whatever it is, that the wastewater treatment will be provided in accordance with applicable laws or something like that?
That would be okay. And I, I guess technically this, this requirement comes from our engineering office. And so it would fall under all other review agency requirements. There are some of these that we like to specify just to make it known on the record and for the developer. Um, but that, yeah, that would be okay or, or it could even be stricken because it's still a requirement of the engineering office.
Okay, that might be easier if, if the commission were okay just striking it as included within the requirements of the engineering office.
That was on number three, it's a stack, staff recommendations. So one more time on the verbiage, so, um, inclusion into Mountain Sewer Corporation sewer or how do you phrase that again?
Probably not very eloquently. It was, uh, well, Steve suggested we might just strike it because it would already be included within an engineering department requirement, but if we wanted to leave it in there, if you as a commission wanted to leave something in there, you could say something like sewer service will be provided in accordance with all applicable laws.
Any other questions, like, by, uh, commission members?
So I'm just going back to the water. I think we read this wrong. It says Lake, Lakeview Water Company is currently serving thirty-four, three hundred and forty-seven point twenty-five equivalent residential connections and providing irrigation to twenty-six point two one four acres of landscape.
Right.
That's what they're currently providing. This project is much larger than that, so it's not saying that it can provide irrigation for the entire project.
I, I, okay. I, I appreciate that, Commissioner. You're right, I read that, I did read that wrong. Under, so I think what we're looking for, I, I don't know if you can see this, um, under source requirement, um, they, they do specifically reference, uh, five point five one irrigatable acres.
Yeah, it was just missing in the, it was, it was hidden on my screen, so I didn't, I didn't read through that.
Requires a source of three point three nine GPM per irrigatable acre. Or eighteen point six eight GPM.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Would it be appropriate to ask the audience if they, is there anyone here to, that would like to speak or comment? Cortland, that be okay?
If you would like to open it up, you can.
Commissioners, anything, any other questions? Okay, I would like to open it up to the audience if there's anyone who would like to address it or has any questions. Okay, seeing none. All right. We're open for a motion then. On this, um, request, we're ready for a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion? No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Staff recommendations.
You may wanna speak right into your mic here.
Okay, I move that, uh, we, uh, give preliminary and final approval for Legacy Estates P R U D subdivision consisting of forty-eight lots, three open space parcels located approximately sixty, sixty-eight East Nighthawk Lane Huntsville in the F V three zone. This is U V L zero five two 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 zero two one. Based on the findings and the staff report, my motion is that, uh, we make this approval, uh, subject to the staff recommendations. Except that staff recommendation number three be amended to state that sewer will be provided in accordance with, uh, all applicable laws.
All right, we have a second. Any other additional comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any one not in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna climb back over to Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Francis. Okay, our last, uh, item on the agenda is two point four U V C O five twenty twenty-one, consideration and action on a request for preliminary approval of Charlie's Acres subdivision, which has four residential lots. Felix, I guess you'll be presenting?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lewis. Okay, so, uh, before you right now, we, uh, have a request for preliminary approval for a, a four lot subdivision. And the, the general, the location of this one, if you look at the area map, you can see that the parcel in red is the, uh, is the, the subdivision. And the address is five hundred south, eighty-four hundred east. The, uh, total acreage of the entire development is thirty-eight acre, there are thirty-eight point two three acres and that's in the agricultural valley, uh, three acre zone. And, um, you can see here what I've done in this, uh, on the right-hand side is split it out into proposal, um, showing the acreage. And we, included in this proposal is, um, a term, a terminal cul-de-sac, a, a street, uh, coming from five hundred south and also some future right-of-way easements. Um, and also proof that water allotments have been secured and the exchange of water for these four lots has been, uh, completed. And also, uh, septic feasibility for all four of these lots. Going on to the next slide, uh, just showing the, the zoning for this parcel. And also some of the standards that, uh, to consider for this proposal is, uh, roadway dedication, that the creation of that new road and also dedication along five hundred south. And also, uh, the formation of blocks for, for further development on adjacent lands. In this, in this circumstance, we do have three acre zoning and each lot within this development meets that. Uh, you also have a minimum width of one hundred and fifty feet, which this has also been satisfied. And the, the subdivision ordinance lays out, uh, review criteria for a subdivision plat. Uh, staff and, uh, county agencies have reviewed this proposal based on those preliminary requirements and, and those have been satisfied. Here's the proposal. Uh, you can see on the, on the top of this page, you have a north arrow which will help to kind of, uh, orient this, this land. And then, um, the area in hatch marks shows area dedicated to the public right-of-way five hundred south. And then you have the, the terminal cul-de-sac street. Uh, you can also see, uh, there's, it might be a little bit difficult, but it says easement for future public right-of-way and that's a sixty-six feet, uh, right where the road terminates and that, that would actually provide, um, connection to, um, both east and west if, um, if at the time the county, uh, deems it necessary to construct a road. And also you have, um, another future right-of-way easement that's thirty-three feet. And that's on the, on the north, uh, section on the, and I'll bring it up on the next screen here. And so this kinda will help you, kinda give you an idea of what, uh, what's been asked for by the planning commission, I'm sorry, the planning division for, uh, mid-block, uh, crossing. So, uh, I've highlighted Vista View subdivision. That one's already been recorded and that one, we actually did request the thirty-three feet. And here we're also looking at, uh, Charlie's Acres, another thirty-three feet for that mid-block, uh, continuation. And then you also have the wider area in green and that's the sixty-six feet for a future public right-of-way. And then the, the area in red is, is that terminal cul-de-sac street. We do have the applicant with us today who, who could also answer questions, uh, Mr. Jeremy Kraus. Glad to be happy to answer any questions as well. And, uh, before I, before I close here, maybe give you staff's recommendation. Staff recommends preliminary approval of Charlie's Acres subdivision uh, based on the conditions stated in the staff report. And also I'd like to add, uh, one condition. Um, it's regarding culinary water and the need to drill wells. The owner of record, he entered into a covenant that advises the new lot owners that a well permit, that well permits must be obtained. And be, before this subdivision can record, the one, one well per, permit must be secured before they can record, so. And yeah, and that concludes what I, what I had. Uh, yes, with the county and what that does is it, it's a covenant that advises, um, lot owners that well permits must be obtained.
Felix, um, we, where this lot is, or this subdivision, I mean, it's close to Huntsville there. How far are they from, uh, the Huntsville water system?
No, I didn't actually measure that out.
I mean, isn't it easier to, well, I don't know what they charge in Huntsville for water, but, you know, I mean, then trying to drill a well, cause you're not sure there's water underneath you there, you know? More than likely in that area right there, there is, because I, I know the area there.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a good possibility that if it turns out that, that a well is not the best way to go, they could always, um, petition the Huntsville water for, for that connection.
Yeah, they're right there, I'm sure. Like the business, that's fine.
I'm not sure if they do allow the construction outside.
Well, that, yeah, that system goes way up east.
It's water for Huntsville and this isn't Huntsville. It's water for Huntsville, and this isn't Huntsville. So there's, there's something in here, Felix. It, it's not in a what, what do you call it, seismic zone or something?
Oh, geologic study.
Geologicals. But you're requiring it anyway because of the road?
Engineering, it's a pretty standard practice for engineering. They, they like to get a, I mean, the study would be done specifically for that public right-of-way, where the road's going to be built, to, to assess the, the soil conditions and.
And that's just where the red is?
Yes.
You're drawing there.
That's right.
The same, this, the soils are sufficient to support a road to go to the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
So this is just a preliminary anyhow, and so they can move forward.
That's right.
Another question. On the upper green one, the thirty-three foot right-of-way. As we worked on Vista View, I think there was discussion that the Vista View right-of-way really can't go anywhere. It can't go to the east because that's something else. And it really can't go to the west because there's a pond or something there it would interfere with. And if, if this actually went to the east, or went to the west there, where would it go?
If it, if it went west, uh, it would continue along that mid-block.
Yeah, but that goes right through the lot.
It wouldn't continue, I don't think it would continue west all the way to the highway. But there is a possibility for, um, considering that Charlie's Acres, that, that north lot, that twenty-five acre lot, that big one, um, if, many years down the road, if, if that land sells, and, um, that could, could be developed, being that it is, um, such a, such a good size. Um, so I think that, that's part of why we, we, we asked for that thirty-three feet is just then anticipation that there is potential for a twenty-five acre piece to be split up.
So hypothetically, if so, if the land to the north of the narrow green band developed, you'd require them, like, thirty-three foot easement?
Yes.
That goes to?
That, it may, it may not extend at that point, but it could provide frontage, um, if there, yeah, that, I think there, it is feasible.
And, and your thought is it might turn there and go north?
That, yes, yep. Or it could turn, it could turn and go south and connect in with the, the sixty-six foot. So yeah, there's, there's a number of possibilities.
Okay, so this lot, uh, lot four could be further subdivided?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I kind of missed that. Uh, where, where is the fourth lot? Yeah, I see three, and then you have the green line to the right there, uh, Vista View. Oh, there are two there, okay, I got you. All right. Okay.
So lot four's frontage is actually the, the cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
Okay, any additional questions?
In this case, they, they have, uh, they've shown the, the four acre feet for each, yes, so one, one acre foot for each.
Okay. Anything else? So somewhere, I think I noticed, minimum block size can be five hundred feet.
Yes.
This would be a block size of five hundred and one feet.
Yeah, and then they're, they're right on the, 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 once, once you hit the five hundred block length, anywhere between five hundred feet and thirteen hundred feet is a good place to actually start to form another block. So, yeah.
So if they made the east boundary of lot one four hundred ninety-nine feet, they wouldn't have to have this easement there, right?
Well, I think we would still consider it, um, we would still, you know, talk with the developer about possibilities. But, yeah, I mean, that's a good point. We'd, we'd, we'd have to evaluate it.
We'd, we'd still likely require it. Uh, the reason for the easement is so that we can make sure nobody builds within this area. And so that if, you know, a hundred years down the road, if the zoning changes, and this area does start to get developed a little bit more, that you don't have buildings right in the middle of where a road would be. And so, so if it were four ninety-nine, we'd still likely ask for it. Uh, yeah, we would require it.
And this is preliminary we're talking about tonight.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. I think.
Make the motion if you want me to.
Go ahead.
I move for a preliminary approval of petition number U V C zero five two zero two one. That may be an O. Uh, Charlie's Acres subdivision consisting of four lots, consi- located at five hundred south, four, eighty-four hundred east Huntsville, thirty-eight point two three acres, eighty-three agricultural valley, Wade Tomlin owner. Uh, this petition is subject to all conditions and recommendations listed in the staff report, and to all state and county agencies' requirements. This motion is based on the findings listed in the staff report.
I'll second the motion. Okay, any further discussion? Did you want to add condition number three that Felix brought up about, uh, um, well permits? I believe it was a condition that well permits must be obtained for each lot, and one well permit must be drilled prior to recording. Let's see, who made the motion? Who made the motion?
I will consider it, I mean, and whatever it is.
As stated, yeah.
I was gonna say.
Would you mind stating it for the? The condition is that a covenant, um, well permit be obtained for each lot, and one well permit drilled prior to recording. Yes. So the developer and the county, there would be a covenant that will be entered into, so that there, everyone's aware of that for each lot. Okay, is everybody okay with that friendly amendment?
Accepted.
Now, the, it's just basically indicating that, uh, if anyone buys that, that they know that there's a covenant associated with that, that they have to, um, have a well on that property. And then it's recorded on there so that every property owner is aware of that. Correct. Yeah, this is a disclosure that's on there. It clouds the title to say you have to, so they don't get surprised. Correct. But there is actually a requirement in our old ordinance that is it states that one well permit must be drilled prior to recording. Our new ordinance, um, this one fell under the old, but our new ordinance requires that a well permit is obtained for every lot, if we choose to do that. So, and that's in our new ordinance, but this fell under the old, so it's ground party. Okay, so does anybody have a problem with the, the amended, the updated, motion? Friendly amendment? Okay, um, all those in favor is the, for the motion as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and take any public comment for any items not on the agenda. Sure, go ahead.
Kind of goes along with that, but.
Please state your name and.
Jeremy Kraus.
Okay.
I would ask the commission to consider revisiting the mid-block requirements in the Alton Valley. Because as we're going through this, it, it honestly feels contrary to keeping, like, the agricultural feel, to put easements all over for future roads, and it's, uh, seems like an unnecessary burden to the developers. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Uh, any further remarks from planning commissioners? So a, a block in Ogden. One eighth of a mile. Trying to give them that. How long's a block in Ogden? Twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth street? It's around five hundred feet. Five hundred feet. That, that is a good point, that, if you're gonna be rural, you don't have five hundred, you don't have Ogden City blocks everywhere. And as we start to, um, develop, we're also gonna be looking at transferring your development rights and pushing those rights into the village areas. And so it may not be needed in some of those areas, but we also want to look at connectivity, um, and the option for that in the future. Not saying that we will be using that, but it's always good to have those options out there, so that if we do need to have connectivity, it's good to have those out there, so the county doesn't have to go in and look at eminent domain and purchasing those. And so it just helps the community, um, have those options. And if we don't have those options, then we have to come in and purchase those at a later date, and that can be burdensome on the taxpayers and the community. And the, for example, these easements here restrict building, but not any other use. Correct. And they could actually, at a later date, actually help the, um, the future owner of the lot, um, you know, depending on what they want to do down the road, because if a developer, development happens next door to it, we always look at what development is happening around that area, and allow for that possibility of connectivity as well. So, um, it's just helpful when we start to create communities, but at the same time, um, as you know, in the general plan, we want to preserve agriculture, and so that's where we're looking at trying to transfer, uh, development rights from farm areas to the village areas. And so we're kind of, it's a bit of a balancing act, because we are in a, um, a rural area, and we want it to maintain that rural atmosphere. And at the same time, you know, growth is expen- expanding out, and so we have a little bit of sprawl, um, to a certain extent, um, uh, happening out from those village areas, but, you know, ultimately, we want that density to occur in the village areas. Thank you. Makes, makes sense.
Is there anything more on the S T R ordinance?
So I appreciate you asking. Um, today in the county commission, um, meeting, they ended up tabling the rezone on the corner of Old Snow Basin Road and the highway, right there, uh, because they want to see the S T R ordinance develop. Um, and you may be aware, a few months ago, they put it on hold, um, but they're going to be looking at it in mid-July in a work session meeting to see where they want to go with that at the present time.
Another question, uh, anything on the Snow Basin plan?
Um, yes, but I can't disclose that. So, yeah, there's certain things that are going on, but, um, it's, at the present time, I, I can't disclose that. Ooh. Okay, uh, any other comments from the director? Something about Snow Basin perhaps? I do want to apologize with the packets, um, Marta, our, you know, stalwart. Um, she's been on maternity leave for a few months, and she's gonna be back on, uh, July sixth, and we can hardly wait.
I went to print one page, and I left the room for a minute, and I come back and it printed them all.
That sounds like something I would. Okay, can I ask one more question? On this last item, there's a right-of-way dedication of thirty-three feet on the south, on five hundred South Street. Does the land go to the center line? Is that gonna be a total sixty-six foot wide? Felix can address that one.
So, your question is, um?
I'm just looking at the plat here, and it says thirty-three feet, so I have two questions. Is the total road width of five hundred south going to be sixty-six feet?
Yes.
And this dedication goes to the, the, the ownership of this subdivision goes out to the center line of five hundred south, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, it says dedicated to Huntsville Townsite. Is that a profit? I mean, is Huntsville Townsite Huntsville Town?
It's probably just an error on the surveying. If you're looking at the plat, sometimes surveyors don't understand that, that it's in an unincorporated area. So it's likely just a review comment that we'll have that says, no, dedicated to the county.
Thank you. Corlin, anything from legal?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, well, I move to adjourn. Thank you.